You're here now, yes. He's another square there on the iPad. And I think we just have to make sure we speak up. Where is the microphone? It's on that iPad. So work session, we only have two calls to work.
I think we'll be having to do it at six o'clock.
So we will call the liver at four thirty two.
Good evening. Tonight is work session number four in sequence. Remember that we'd scheduled to have a total of five. So we're moving along in the process. This actor is going to be making the bulk of this presentation. I'm going to be here for the duration of it, but also kind of keep the key with our security. So issues along the way. But Kira is going to be the presenter this evening. Couple of introductory notes. We're sort of caught in the middle a little bit in terms of process. So we, because the governor has just signed the budget, I think today, just finished yesterday. OSPI has not finished their budgetary calculator, something you refer to as the F two oh three. That's the calculator that sort of would allow each district to understand how much money they think they're going to receive. And so that is not available. So had to make a choice here and the choice we've made is we don't feel like we can wait long any longer. And so this actor has spent day and night for the last 10 days essentially trying to kind of reinvent what OSPI would be doing. And we've given you some numbers that we think are materially correct, but as we went through them, we're already seeing things where like we need to ask those guys about that. So I think you need to understand that this is pre OSPI release information, sort of our best or good faith ever to give you. The best of what we think the legislative session meant to us and the sort of general short trajectory of where we're headed. But also to know that if there are changes, they wouldn't be surprised by that. Because our alternative was to just kind of throw our hands in the air and we can be much better than that. So there's a lot of really great information here about the impact, projected impact of the legislative changes as well as. I'll be here for the presentation, but Kira is giving them. And the other thing that we wanted to highlight is that there's some pretty dense slides. So you probably get a sense for our style. We're giving you a lot of detailed information that doesn't mean we're going to review every part of that detailed information. And so if you want to dig in on a particular slide, it's sort of on you to say, hey, can we hold on on the side of this? Because we're going to kind of maybe with certain slides that this actor knows she wants to dig into. Information or for reference. Okay. Any initial questions before we?
No questions, but thank you for doing this work.
Or not two or three.
That is a lot of work. That's huge and we'll not hold you to the penny on that.
We spent lots of time looking at it, feel good about what we're going to present, but again, there's lots of the. Scenarios and the caveats to the. So I appreciate that. Okay, so again, like Ben said, there's some of the new group then briefly, so if there's specific questions, we'll stop. So our goal tonight will be.
Welcome to the corner.
So the thing we're going to focus on tonight, really want to give you an idea of where we're at in the current year, our current spending and. Productions for next year. So enrollment this year, our fund loan, cash balance, and then. Where we need our revenues and the term interest we're going to contribute this year. And then moving into twenty five, three, six, review our enrollment projections. Also look at the revenues based on what the legislative session. They need with and then our expenditure projections as well. Here again, timeline is mentioned, they just signed today and specifically they did sign that.
No material because of K twelve.
So yeah. This work session, we will go into our public hearings for in June and two of our public hearings and then workforce adoption being involved. Great. So just in reviewing where we're at right now, as of May. May twenty twenty five, you can see that dotted line that was that. That's tracking where we are with our inter fund loan. So that dotted line does show the inter fund loan unit being transferred over in January. Without the dotted line, that's that that solid gold line. That the inter fund loan can currently be at eight point five. Five point, five point nine, sorry, five point nine. That are five point nine for cash without the income. So. Did receive our, our levy maintenance for April. It's the collection rate is a little bit lower than I was expecting, we're about six percent right now. We always do receive another large unit in May. On tradition, we've got another million dollars in our main unit, but it's not quite to the question that I had hoped. So hopefully it might be made up in May, but we just don't know. Questions about this more accurately? Yeah, so in June, we're definitely going to go back down into the negative with, without the inner fund loan. So, you know, it's important for us now to track our, our cash with and without, with and without the loan. So June, you receive a very two and a half percent portion of payment. So that's one of our lower months and we will go back down to that one's without the. And June, July and August, we'll jump back up because we get those larger payments.
And then remind me when, when do we have to pay that?
By the end of the school year, yeah, August thirty first, at the end of the school calendar year.
Okay. Was there a change on the inter fund loan? Is there a change where the interest, is that where the current year goes just like?
So this is a look at where we're at compared to May compared to May of last year. And we are down sixty five, empty, sound like. Sixty six, I think it's sixty six of. So it is a difference in sixty five compared to May of last year. This doesn't include new market or when you start, this is just our K twelve numbers. I think it's really, it's really important to, to remove the new market and when you start numbers so that we really have a sense of where we're at K twelve. Because that's what our, our revenues are at, it is based off of that, so. Watch that closely, we talk about that each month, but that's just something in my. It's also important how many students we serve as a district. So that would include our new market people and our start people. So are those numbers as dire as the K twelve ones are? So it isn't, it is important to, to track who we serve, absolutely. However, the, you know, the new market numbers are, are actually, they're, you know, they're kind of in their, their own entity where they are. You pay their own, they have their own expenses and it's offset by their own revenue and then they also carry a fund balance for them. So that's, that's a separate. Separate entity and as far as running start goes, that's really just a book group. You don't get to keep any of that money, it's separate to the, to the college once it's received. So I think isn't the trend that those are both increasing in students? So they're getting people away from two or higher levels, right? Yes, so students are, but they're still, as far as the public is concerned, they're still within the Tumwater. Area of covering public schools, correct?
And there is a slide here that actually shows it that way, showing everybody that we're actually serving.
We're thinking for our PR, you know, we need to show that we're not necessarily losing students, they're scoring the different areas within the district.
I believe you come from different, you know, both from different school districts in the last year. Is this, when we're talking about that, there's sixty five kids, which is just a little over one percent of our population. Is that, in terms of budget creation, are you, are you happy with that? Or are you expecting to be less than that as you look to budget, as we create a budget for next year? Within one percent, is that like good, bad, different?
So we will see on our, our projections for next year, it's actually a little bit lower, I think very conservative with our enrollments and so.
I guess I can rephrase this, is that alarming you to be within like, like, obviously we don't want to see negative, I could let's, less. Does that concern you to see a one percent up or down?
Yes, please.
Can we go back to that? So. Kevin, it depends on how you ask the question. So we're not comparing budget to actual.
Okay.
We're comparing actual to actual. So just imagine, put budget out of your mind for a second. This graph is simply looking at how many kids the district had. When it separates out, the market still centering, so, so we're trying to get to the issue of kind of enrollment and staffing, right? How many kids are we serving in our bricks and mortar schools last year as compared to how many for the same month this year? So what this is illustrating is something's up, something's up, right? When it comes to our bricks and mortar schools, this is not a normal phenomenon. To lose that many kids February, March, April, and May of a regular school. That it's, it's not unusual in a regular school year to see a slight incline and then a slight decline through the year. But that should be more or less constant every single year. What this is telling you is that something's up, this year is different. And the curve doesn't look the same. So four years ago, three years ago, two years ago, one year ago, this year. That something is different about this year.
So I think we spend a ton of time on these next few slides and just, it's just a reference for the big picture of the state budget. I think the state is in receiving their revenues and. Twelve is seeing a little bit of that, but it's, you know, it's just.
Well, so if we could actually skip to the next slide. So what this is really illustrating here is that the prior two slides are showing that the state is spending more money. Their budget is increasing by more than inflation. You saw on the previous slide, it could look along six, seven, eight percent per budget. But then you look at K twelve share of that. And I thought that there was a loss of the producer in this data, this was not data that I had dependent if there's. Like that on the bottom. But forty three point two percent is the lowest share of that. Since at least two thousand and fifty.
When was that McLaren?
There was a series of McLaren links, I believe, first one. The first actual rule, I believe, was twenty thirteen. The funding followed, but the actual rulings, I think there were series, I believe the first one was like in the twenty thirteen, fourteen range. And then a series of follow ups and then what led to a recent.
That's what I was wondering with that. So it was like a landing indicator, what else? And then clearing thing came first and then it was several years later then. So somehow it might be time for another McLaren. Because that's a lot, the difference of ten percent.
And mostly what's happening is that. It isn't that they're spending less in nominal dollars on K twelve education now, they're spending more this year. But the sort of health and social service area of the state budget has exploded and it's growing much faster. So it's shrinking the size of the pie. So.
Is that because of Medicaid?
Uh, yeah, there's, you know, there's a lot of COVID years in here where there's big influx of federal dollars. Much of which was K twelve related, mental health. Tell you the truth, I don't know, I don't know if you have to list them all, but I just know that. It would be deceiving to tell you that they're not, that they're cutting funding for K twelve, they're not, they're spending more on non.
Is the percentage?
It's a percentage.
So. One of the, we talked a little bit about this in our past meetings, but you know, they had. We were sure we were going to see a change in the property tax and the levy lift. And we did go ahead and pass the increase to the maximum for our levies. So if board approved, we have the authorization from the state to. To collect additional five hundred dollars per student. In the twenty six, twenty twenty six calendar year. So that would affect half of our next year. And in the next few slides, the role will show you kind of exactly how much that would weigh to. And so, you know, so it, again, if we, we need to make the decision, if we would collect those funds. Actually, I can share, it's about one point seven million. Additional funds that we would be able to collect next year for the twenty twenty six. The second half of our, our April, our April collection next year. We would, regardless of whether we make that decision to collect those, there would be an additional three and a three point three percent CPI increase, which is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, so that's compared to the levy lift, it's, it's, it's not quite as much, but there is, there's a difference in. Again, you can see how that equates to some of the other funding in later slides. In text to the, to increase revenues.
Is that because we already have approved?
So the board certifies how much is collected every year. And so the, the voters did approve to, to be able to levy that, that amount. But because of the rollback and because of the, the cap that the state has put on that, we haven't been able to collect a whole amount of the levies. So when you certify, when the board certifies the amount that can be collected, you're, you'll be certifying an additional one point seven million. In revenue, which will actually increase what's collected from taxpayers.
But nothing may have more.
They voted for it, but they've already started making payments on what we recap that. So they would see an increase. But it's not an increase in approval. Correct. They've already.
But to them, it might be a little bit.
But it's not, they already, they already sued again, yeah. And that was for a couple of years. Last year, is it just last year?
This is the first year, this is the first year.
Which one was that, February or last year?
February and last year.
Yeah, February of twenty twenty four, they're not. So that's well over a year ago. Okay, so there is, there is a, a few different changes to specialized funding. They increased the excess cost multiplier, so that actually just increases, we have our, our flat rate for our V A. Our V A students and then there's a multiplier that actually increases our special ed. I mean, for, for M S O C and for everything for, for teaching. So that's the, that's the difference, I have a bigger cycle, we'll actually show you the increase later, what we'll see for special ed. They eliminated the sixteen percent cap, which really doesn't affect us, we weren't above over the, the cap, so. Fifteen or something? Eighteen point something. Yeah, so that didn't, that didn't affect us that much, but.
But it grew a lot, actually.
It is, yeah, it was increased, yeah, but the fact that the cap and the funding is the thing, yeah. We have increased our, our spending limit number, so. And then the, the threshold for safety net is, is actually lower now, they lowered that. So with safety net, we can't actually start cleaning expenses until we've reached a, a certain threshold of what we spent on specific students. So because they've lowered that threshold, that might help us in the future. There's about one point five million rounded, about one point five million. Safety net now, I think Chris had it like one point four eight was what we have been approved of this year. And that's, 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 she works, it'd be hard to make that happen. So it's, it's amazing that she can collect that much. So next year, that might be more.
Really also now that they're claiming the students that are turning twenty two, that, that's a lot of amount, a lot of amount. There was a, I think there was that year, kind of in that change, in that year they were turning twenty two, we didn't, we weren't able to collect it. But yeah, so that is something now.
No, it's, um, so yeah, students that turn twenty two will be able to, and I'm not, we're not sure exactly from the many students we have at that.
I got a couple, there, there will be for next year, I think. We don't, it's the reason we don't have a graduation this year for our next program, because they're all staying this year.
That's actually good for that, because it means more time to train.
So they'll all be, so I figure there's a handle here for.
Essentially, this marries. The funding to the requirement. Yeah, so if we're going to, if they're going to force us to keep the children that actually is great, if they benefit. So it's not forcing, like if it's a legal requirement to, then they're extending.
Not your answer, but maybe Kevin's. Today was day of champions and we'll talk to lots of, it's said, you know, lots of happy special teachers, but they're tired. And so just wondering what, knowing this, what Chris might be doing over the summer to think about how this changes staffing or changes special ed programming?
I think it's probably all tied into this because of the financial situation we're in. We already spend, I don't know, three plus million dollars more than we received. So this is just sort of closing some of that gap. Obviously, we've been spending money that we don't have. So our goal at this particular point is not necessarily looking at expansion and offering additional program. It is build up our any fund balance, get out of the borrowing money. That, that's our current sort of priority. There certainly is an opportunity to have conversations down the road here as, as we look at trying to balance needs versus that any fund balance. So I think that's maybe for another day, but that, I mean, it's something that, you know, yes, there's ongoing needs and the cuts that we've had. Will have a significant impact across this, across our system. So certainly impacting special education, but not necessarily in a positive way. So we have needs to meet, it's just a matter of when, when and how can we do that in the future?
So here's an example of the, the increase in funding multipliers. So we would take our, our base V A dollars and, and multiply them by that one point two six. Also, last year was, it was different from our tier one and our tier two students. So the source one, source two students were getting paid at a different rate, now we're getting paid at the same rate. So, so that shows a pretty significant increase because that is, you know, we actually have more students in our. That will show it. And we'll treat that gap. Okay, so moving into our, the new. New rates for the material supplies and the. There's an increase of about one dollars per student. K twelve and then another ten dollars for our nine and twelve students. So there's an increase. One dollars per student.
We'll be talking about that as well.
So that.
Yeah, so. With, with M S O C, with the levy, with a number of these things. They were already scheduled to go on a certain level, so it's easy to confuse what the legislative change this year actually did. Our low to levy capacity was already increased, right? So you sort of separate out what was the normal inflation increase from what the new box, same with M S O C. So, you know, if I were to try to, you know, make this up, like how we basically understand what happened, they basically did two inflation. But we were getting, you know, regardless of what happened, districts where we're supposed to get about forty bucks a kid. That was just going to happen just because that's what basically just law would require, right? It more or less essentially sent kind of double, not exactly, but kind of did a double inflation. The numbers seem big because we want to publish it on the state's, I mean, you know, for all two hundred and eighty four districts, it's a lot of money. But really, when you look at tapping with our insurance, our energy costs, or certainly not coming to what we're experiencing.
Not only were we already in a hole, this doesn't fill the hole of our current increase, right? It's, it's not cover the, the increase that we're experiencing in the coming year. So this is like probably one of the most disappointing things of the legislature, because I thought we all did a pretty good job of explaining how they have lost, like we have not gained or kept pace with this. And last, the last, in the last year, they did a twenty dollar increase or something, this year is for eighty. And, and we're telling them to actually close the gap, it's five hundred and plus per kid. So it's a fraction of what we need to, to kind of close this. So this is an area, they still got a lot of work to do to kind of take care of material supplies and operating. But you know, if you think the idea is, hey, we should be able to have money to do curriculum. If that would be sort of within that, that's a supply, but yeah, we're not even keeping up with the costs that we are experiencing.
There's some table showing the increase of those. The five point three percent increase for. K twelve as a whole and also. High school, nine and twelve separate. So just a couple of our notes that. From the session. Some things I wanted to point out on this, our TK program, so that's number seven there. We are having to have a cap. We are having to have a cap on our. You know, it's only a limited cap of about seventeen. Um, currently serve thirty two students. But because we started our program halfway through the year. The F T E that we actually claimed, because the students were only actually in, you know, in the classroom from um, January to June. The the full time equivalent was only seventeen. So um, the way to funding you now this year is they are capping the funding at where we what we claimed this year. So unfortunately, next year, we're only going to be able to do that seventeen.
That's what we're.
Well, it's a big deal too. It's a big deal.
Yeah.
Because we currently have two sides. We've served them. And put two kids.
Yeah.
And uh, the state basically said, we're out, like, you get seventeen kids. That's what we're. It's a, it's a huge shift, because this was a very significant state initiative.
It was.
And.
Again.
And uh, we're basically kind of missed roughly the path here. So.
And all the trade and stuff, you all know how much it is.
So as Kevin mentioned earlier, that we got changing the intercom memo. So. We know interest payments that have to be made. Still will need to pay an interest payment this year. Um, but we will. We need another minimum of next year, which um, we'll have to pay interest on that. So.
You know, a possible interest, is that a cost?
For this year, I think it's probably about three percent.
Dollars?
Um, I I don't know in dollars.
So that's, but that's their main way of.
Well, the loan is about three point six million. So ten percent would be three hundred and sixty thousand. So one percent would be thirty six thousand.
Yeah.
Maybe less than a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. We'll use the staff.
Weird, because we're paying ourselves, right?
Oh, yeah. Just for one fight, yeah.
So. Um, the other great thing is we'll continue to be able to serve three meals. Um, to and will a- actually add.
That was a big one.
Yes, so um, so all of our elementary.
I don't want to be trying to say that.
Yeah, I know.
On number four, I could just, I just, I think I said to you email today, there's a question from a from a community member on biggest house bill twelve ninety six that was passed through the legislature. If that one is, I'd still waiting for the governor's signature. I hadn't really heard whether that's officially signed. Um, but it's been passed through. And so that one has like additional monitoring and you can investigate. And O S B I got funded to do investigations that could go through this, focused specifically on equity civil rights. And so there's a a series of of requirements that I tried to outline in the email that I wrote today. So you you can see some of that. And we, the parents were really asking like, how do you inform parents of this? And I thought it's something for our team to be looking at when we offer some sessions and try to kind of inform parents on that that house bill. And we are required to put like a student bill of rights in our handbook and on our district websites and those things. So it's one of those things our team, O S B I is supposed to be creating a kind of toolkit for us to help them with this. That's kind of what that is. But there is some money set aside for them to do. There's a big chunk of that bill that is around compliance and investigation and what happens if they find that you're this, and it goes into quite details about that too.
So moving into our twenty five twenty six numbers, this is basically what what Ben mentioned earlier, just sort of our caveat that we working with that two oh thirty and and things might change as it comes out, but. To share some of the increases and what we would be looking at with the preliminary enrollment numbers that we. So here are the preliminary enrollment, the preliminary enrollment forecast that I'm going to be recommending. Um, see the first column there, the twenty four twenty five budgeted. Compared to our A F T, which is our average N one F T this year, May. So K twelve right now is a total of sixteen nine forty one, male sixty two thirty three budgeted. We have a running start budget of one eighty and we're currently at two fourteen. Open doors is at eighteen and we're at seventeen. A O B is being budgeted one seventy and we're currently at one ninety seven. So you can see those those bigger jumps in between budgeted and actual. So um, in looking at um. What we should budget for next year. Twenty five twenty six. That last column there. K twelve, where that's actually a decrease of of the nine. But you can see it's actually kind of fluctuating from, you have some really large bands, really large fifth grade bands that are moving to six, which is lowering what we're projecting for. For elementary. And then like a large eighth grade cohort that's moving into high school. So that's looking like a big jump at our high school level. But it's actually just a really large eighth grade cohort moving up. So um, we've seen the decrease that we've seen this year is has been, like we talked about earlier, it's primarily primarily been at the secondary level. So other than that, that eighth grade cohort, we're just pretty much keeping it flat to where we'll receive our our average F T E from this year. So um, so I think that that's important understanding. We had a lot of, like you said, a lot of fluctuation from our our students going to the market and to running start. And also to A O E, we saw a lot of students moving over into our A O E program. So um, you know, keeping those. Those that F T E flat and then shifting them down to more running start and A O E. That makes it look like our total enrollment. Look like it is, that means our total enrollment up um, from sixty five sixty nine to a projected sixty five eighty. But again, it's important to remember that a lot of those increases are. Any questions about this or do you want to?
Yeah. I think this is actually one of the. Coming away with a pretty. There's a history of issues. So if you compare the two new columns. You'll go, wow, that is almost exactly, those would be the most accurate budget projections the district has had in its recorded history of sixty six, sixty six oh one to sixty five sixty nine. And at least the last four years that we put that without like, not even. So you would look at that and you would think, wow, that's really accurate. And then you pull the first layer of the memory back. And like the aggregate is close. But what you're seeing is a ton more kids over the new market. Quite a few more kids moving to running start. So the total number of kids served is pretty close to budgeted. But where they're being served is changing. So one of the things that Cara found was back in twenty three, twenty four, twenty two, twenty three, back to like, oh, back to like COVID times. And I remember this came up as one of the first things that you mentioned. So districts enrollment is always higher than its budget, like way a bit higher. You know why that was? New market and A O E and all the rest. The new market kids, the new market kids didn't seem to be consistent in the year. In the high school projections and yet the state expects that new market is a school of the taller schools. So they were being reported as part of the actuals. They weren't. Or as budget. So every year for three or four years, right? The results are, you're looking at them, you're looking at this like aggregate look and you're going, wow, we are outpacing our budget. We're killing it. Our enrollment is much higher. In reality, that was not the true story. That was not the true underlying phenomenon. And even this, you still have new market now embedded into high school. You know, A O E is basically ours. So in terms of this, what counts towards the district, they all count. It's like how we get funded. This was the question. So the funding is a little bit different. So this is, this is the Jill slide. This is the slide that shows all the kids that are being served. The other one starts to break them out and eliminate them. How we get money for them.
Yeah, so I've been reading articles where some of the schools now are converting to have more of a technical uh, stuff within the high schools, not at a separate syllabus. It's like, we had this big trend for thirty, I don't know, more years to go separately. So they now it's back to integrating and they've been talking about the successes they've had in doing that.
There's a lot, I mean, our entire superintendent group in the region is all having pretty serious conversations around. Isn't it time to maybe relook at how we serve high school students? Because, you know, we know a group of kids are going off running start that probably it's not the best fit for them, but they want more flexibility. They want some of the things, they want to get through school faster. They want to not be, have to show up three days or five days a week. There's, there's some needs that are existing that we are not on that K twelve brick and mortar comprehensive.
To save money.
Yeah, and so and that and the new, and and like our community college turns away nobody. So they accept everyone. And at one point, you know, you had to pass exam entry camps and have a certain, like, none of that is true anymore. So I think our high schools need to look at how we best serve kids. Um, there is clearly like new market, there's a waiting list for numerous programs. So there's a, there's a desire to have kids into career technical education programs. How should we examine those, expand those on our own campus? So then we can keep some of the kids on our own campus. New market will fill, even if we kept some of our our Tom Water Black Hills kids at our own schools, new market will still be full. So uh, and then running start, that's a whole one. So we'll be, we'll be looking at that. I know that conversation gets kicked off pretty soon here about how should we relooking at high school.
So basically with this, um, our new market that's included in the high school twenty forty two A F T. Um, we are, we're not seeing that. We're not projecting any kind of increase based on our A F T for this year. Um, so I think, you know, that that's kind of an important piece to note that it's um. It's not being based off of budget from last year. It's A F T for this year moving forward, it's actually nine less on that period, so. It it's because you've ending, we saw that drop, that curve where we saw the sixty five compared to the May last year. You can kind of get that, get that feel for how much we. Decrease that and then we're very conservative. So the next few slides will show you the the revenues based off of these numbers. So um, at the end, we were projecting our revenues at the end of this year to be about. Hundred and fifteen point four million. That's um. That's based off of that, the the drop in the A F T for this year. So the the list there is is the difference in the increases of all the legislative outcomes that we just talked about. Um, and the. Enrollment, the enrollment projections that I mentioned. So if you look at, um, I just kind of broke out all the different revenue sources. That two point five percent whole increase is that seven sixty eight increasing instead of there are seven insurance costs still.
Are you using a different color to kind of change the globe? I could use this color.
I could use blue, yes. Yeah, so they, the funding model for this year was the two point five, which is essentially. Um, our increase in M S O C is not just about four hundred and thirty four thousand. The special ed increase due to those, the new multipliers, just over a million. Alung together, all of our C T E skill center, A O E and running start numbers, so that that did increase that five hundred and fifty. That's an additional. And then, like I mentioned, with our levy increase with both. Both the. The C P I increase at three point three percent and the additional five hundred dollars per student um, that we can collect in our in our cap. It's that one point six five.
When would be as a board vote for that certification? May? Today?
I think we should talk about that. There's a couple of different. Uh, but that's not an easy answer. It's typical for it to happen prior to the Thanksgiving holiday in a normal situation. We started to talk internally about whether it made sense to take a resolution to commence your your adoption of the budget. Because it will be sort of a pivotal point. Because if you don't plan to certify, which, sorry, assuming that you wouldn't plan to certify, it could be advocated for from the legislature. So it'd be strange that we advocate it. But um, we wouldn't want to adopt a budget that assumed it.
So we need to do that before, we need to get five minutes.
But we, no, it could be the same, literally.
So that would be after the public hearings. Sure. Public hearings will try to disclose. The success of the budget hinges a lot on certifying the levy.
Yeah, so you can take a resolution or take a motion, allow it's a resolution, I think, at that point.
We call it something else, the resolution.
Do we have a?
I understand. I have a question about the, so you said we grew from start and what's what? So they did increase the amount per student that we were seeing for running start. Say it was a thousand, three hundred thousand for a running start. On the.
Just again, you haven't described that it's not a complete pass.
So um, I'm assuming because of the the increase in running start, it's going to be. Well, I don't know if they will increase their tuition or not. I don't know as far as what.
But it increased the evening rate, obviously, so.
Yes, yes, so.
That's what's going through.
Right, and we do receive, um, there is a bit of indirect that we we do collect on on that rate based on the difference of what they they charge us at the.
If I may, uh, what you might be going at first. Even though we pass on ninety three percent of that dollar, it still shows as a revenue on our books. So it shows on the revenue side, all of it, and it shows on the expense side. So we we see it in those cases, so it shows as a big number, but we end up just, you know, South Sound bills us. And we pay that bill, it's like the eating bill, but like it's just another bill. So we get the revenue, it shows on our books, and then turn around and write a check and it's revenue expense.
So it's not a hundred percent. It's maybe seven percent.
With the legislature.
I believe that's.
I was always wanting to do this.
I appreciate the. That is a good question. Uh, community colleges are trying to negotiate that. Doesn't say you have to up a whole seven percent. You've got multiple kitchens for some of those. You know what? We're just gonna have a call you.
You can call Panorama too.
So um, so this is a total of five point three, you know, we can move revenue. Any other question about this? So that is good. That is good news. And then it changes that side. So um, we're projecting to end of the year at that one nineteen, just shy of one hundred and twenty. Um, our bargain decreases and our stepping call increases, what we um, are contractually obligated to to pay at all the different levels. We have a one point six, one seven um, increase in I P D and then a one point seven. Moving increase in stepping column. Our projected non-inflation increases, so that would be like our insurance, we put former insurance companies, another two hundred and fifty thousand. Projecting, you know, just fuel and moving, so inflation is just going to go up. So that's. In total, it would be another five hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. So so those are expenses that we know we are going to have. Next year. Um, with all the work that we did in our salary reductions and our reduction in M S O C. Um, moving into next year and then also moving to, you know, all year long, we've been kind of working on eliminating a lot of our costs. And then also moving to, you know, all year long, we've been working on eliminating a lot of our costs. The offset of all of those is a negative. So we are receiving five point three in, in revenue, but yeah, the cost, yeah.
Just want to reiterate, those are estimates right now.
Yes.
Those are not, no backs on the salary reduction.
The work that we did this year, as we decreased our, our ENSOC's from budget was about a million dollars. So we've been continuing to save. But again, we have these, these larger increases moving into next year, which it's just part of our business. So it is increasing right now.
So we don't know exactly what the bargaining increase is, if you let yourself negotiate it, right? It could be higher.
It's a best.
Eliminate that. So that would be an expect, an expense projection of one hundred and sixteen. That's important when we're looking at what our minimum board on blood balance, that's expression, what that is going to be as it moves, as we move into the next cycle. So at this point, you know, looking back, talking about, you know, what do all those numbers mean? Where are we at? Big picture. Back in our first work session, we brought three different scenarios to you. I hope this remind you that option A was stop digging. We just wanted to, just balance the budget, not put it in our reserves. Option B was to avoid an interfund loan and then in the future, avoid the interfund loan in the future. And, and put some back in, so we're putting some back into reserves, so that we didn't have to have. Option C was to get us compliant to our, our amount policy of six percent, which was eliminating out of over eight million dollars. So what, what we were directed to do was find somewhere in between the B and C, what we talked about. So you saw on the previous slide where we eliminated over six point six million. A lot of that was just across the board and like work from staffing or program reductions, ENSOCs. So, so we're, you know, we're getting there. We're making progress in this. And, and I, you know, I think that, that's like. So when I say we're getting there, we project about another three million, like you just said, Joe, that back into balance. So this won't eliminate the need to or it won't eliminate the need to have an interfund loan at the beginning of the year. Hoping by like June, by summer, I think that will be able to build up our reserves so that we won't have to continue to hold that, that loan. And then continue to work as we went through this budget series to get closer to that six percent. And with you. So just to kind of give you an idea of where we're going to be to get towards that, that goal of that minimum fund balance compliance. It would be up over eight, be about eight and a half million would get us to that six percent goal. But remember, one point five of that is going to be our, our reserves for so we have to be, this would be at about a hundred and nineteen million in expenses in six percent of our, of our expenses. So we just can't forget about our so, so we're getting there. We have to be careful on our spending and have to continue to to watch spending just a bit more than we're going to share.
One concern I have, are we going to have to make cuts next year? You already, we haven't gone to all the details, but in order to get anywhere close to that, there's another round of cuts.
So happy to answer that, but choose my words carefully here, okay? A part of the difficulty of these exercises is you assume that means it's going to change and of course things will change. So this is the only way that we can do the exercise, right? It's either where we're at, where we're at. So we're doing the best we can to tell you where we're at. We know that budgets can change. The legislators are taking themselves on before, right? Like so, something's going to come to fruition on that end as well. So I'm trying to think through, like, I'm sort of expecting, honestly, that the angle of this to chill out. We're not going to give the same sort of revenue maybe that first year, next year. So trying to factor all that in. But how about this? One scenario, one scenario. That slide that, that was two slides back. The, that one, another one. Anyway, one of the slides, basically is like, if we meet our goal, the goal of adding three million dollars to the fund base, then mine, right now, we got, we're, we're four negative months this year, right? And that is with the Newmarket reserves, right? We are relying upon the reserves of Newmarket to be reliable and suffice, right? So if we, if we are able to add three million dollars to the fund base, sort of play that out and nothing else changes, which of course it will. But if you play that out, yeah, as long as we can maintain that operating surplus and the board is willing to write that out, you can get your goal, you can get your goal, right? It'd take a little longer, but you would, as long as you're adding, it'll change, right?
You want some of that, some of the levy in the year two, which is a full year collection, assuming that you can, correct?
Doubles that amount, correct? So, you know, you could, there is a scenario in which if these assumptions fail, that we would not need to make nearly the magnitude cuts we're talking about this year, which was a real, that's the other thing really wanted to talk about today is, you know, we've had a light move tonight, right? I just, everybody needs to understand the magnitude impact that the of the system this year, and then you get all the else. I'm not the most, you know, like, this has been a very, very, very difficult year for the schools. People have been asked to do a lot more. And to take the next toll, so you know, I wanted, I wanted to make sure that that is part of the discussion here. It's, it's easy to describe on a slide and a spreadsheet. It's been a huge lead for our leaders and our teachers, the bus drivers, like everybody has had to be part of this and it is really the package of people who's very significant advice. Nevertheless, there is a scenario where if we control costs and we're willing to let time take over, we could achieve that goal without material significant discounts. That is a scenario and I would say a goal. If we continue to lose enrollment at the rate that we're currently at, that is no longer a scenario. When I say lose enrollment, it's a finessed way to talk about where you might be going to Running Start and show off our sheet of Black Hills High School, Tamar's from the fuel, fuel, and therefore we're staffing your buildings with fuel. And those are our, those are our team members that are feeling the impact. They don't care about the spreadsheets. It shows the totals the same. These are jobs. These are our teachers, right? And they're the ones that are being impacted by those trends.
You've seen Running Start kind of grow, and I haven't probably, I could put this, I have this information, I read it every couple of months. Newmarket's adding a electrical program. They're expanding their cosmetology to add barbering. So there's a little bit of ads, so they're looking at it. And that pretty much, the programs are full. There is no space to add. So what you're kind of seeing, what you'll see kind of this point forward is Newmarket sort of, they are capped out. There is no space for them, okay?
One caveat to that, and I'm hearing this directly from the registrars, which is Newmarket as a whole as a path doesn't mean more of our kids.
That's true. We have, we have the predominantly the highest percentage by a significant margin than everybody else. So they may not serve more kids like with large.
Right, you're right.
They do, and they do by, by a large percent just because of the proximity to our high schools. And so that, that, yeah, we do have a lot of kids participating in Newmarket. So it's just, but again, I think that's probably not, there is, if you look at it just kind of historically, we're, I can keep track of that over the course of the next couple of years, the number of kids in our schools specifically to go in. So I guess another idea as we start to talk about rethinking high school, how can we, is there a goal for us to recapture some of those by creating programs that they want?
So with respect to Running Start, I mean, we've talked about the fact that it's gross and moving, it happens. But the entire picture of costs and enough to families and everyone, so people are going to have less money when the property tax increases. They're going to want to look for any opportunity of them to save money and that's going to be hoping to record using Running Start for college tuition. So I would strongly, strongly recommend that you consider that that number in estimate. Cause I, I think it's going to go exponentially higher.
What, what about?
If you put two cents, which I don't think we hit that number.
It was two, yeah, right.
Two twenty.
Remember Kevin, you and I talked about college credits in high school.
Yeah.
That's a real big trend in any districts.
So it's, and that's what, the problem is. The, the problem is, we, we were, we're talking with, and I think we need to talk with OSPI and others. They, the community colleges do some things that we don't. Like, like they play by a whole different set of rules that we need to figure out. They can earn, our kids can earn credits at a much higher rate. Like we have basically a hundred and eighty hours in a seat to get a credit. They can do it in a third of the time at the community college to get their credit. So like they're playing by different rules and we need to sort of push on, push on OSPI to say, we're going to start playing by your same rule that you're letting Running Start. If we want to compete with Running Start, we need to be able to offer the same opportunities that they have at Running Start. So I think there's a, there's a group of us wanting to push back on that and create different opportunities for kids. And so I think that would be a much more serious conversation in the years to come. Cause it's, it feels like this is like a benefit to the community college that, again, I'm not sure it's serving all our kids well. I mean, I think there's some great opportunities, but how do we duplicate that? But we should, can we do some of that same thing?
I, I don't, I mean, just gave you a list of, you, you can't because you can't simulate an entire associate degree into years. And that hasn't been legislative changes in the language around Running Start. Because of our numbers you just described, you know, you can get all of those credits in. So you can be a junior and a senior and literally get to your college under your belt. And we have had many, many, many students who are going to celebrate with a graduation who are doing that. Talk about that as a huge benefit to them and is even more a benefit to families that are trying to figure out how to pay for our graduation. And so it's one of those things that while you can continue to look at figuring out college and high school and I stand for that, cause that has the same effect, you know, of college credits. But I mean, Running Start is like the most phenomenal college savings plan that there is. It's just.
I think we can plan for both, you know, and we make them, we can figure that kids are going to go to Running Start and just see the kind of children who are very successful. And then there's other students, in fact, mine is one of them, he's been in college now. He, in high school was not a Running Start kid. He would have been successful from Running Start. But he did multiple college and high school classes. And it's, it's already saved his pocket of money. So I think, you know, finding to have a medium of the gold, you know, means to benefit from that. Does save families, it, you know, it doesn't, it's not the same, but it's a little. But there's something.
How much more time do you think he has?
So, and I, you know, I wanted to point out kind of all the different scenarios and all the changes and everything. And we, we started, I think, one of the biggest surprises to us too is when did projections in December, class projections, so that we figured out reductions and where to where to reduce out in schools. You know, saw a, a reduction of over a hundred from just in December when we started in, in projections. So that was over a million dollars, one point one million dollars revenue. Just in that, those few months that as we're going through our, our productions, we saw that massive shift in, in Newmarket, in the plan. You know, they kind of went everywhere and this is based on the projections moving more. So we looked, rolled everyone up from, in December, rolled everyone up from that and then saw that, that shift in what we're, what we're recommending tonight compared to where we were in December. We saw that, that big shift. So there's lots of different things that can change or.
And our team came in and went and made adjustments at the middle school, high school, around seven, based on this information. That's all.
Yeah. The law's frightening, isn't it? To see that massive change.
But it's also, for me, there is a real exciting opportunity. There's a lot of people having this conversation about the future of high school. We've got some really bright people in Tamar's leadership really thinking about how can we be the leader in figuring out, cause Running Start's fantastic, but not for every kid. And, you know, what we're worried about are kids that seek out these opportunities, not because they're exactly to getting an A degree or necessarily even going to get to these college classes. They just want flexibility. And if we can provide that flexibility, then why aren't, right? And so that needs to be a partnership between the thought leaders, our association leaders, you know. There's a lot of districts figuring trips to be, but if we can be the ones to figure it out, that would be a really big deal.
The other thing I just wanted to say, like I talked about, having, looking at our, our class sizes and, and making those reductions. Again, I think there's another seven, so eliminate, yeah, just based on our how about the secondary, just based on class sizes and being creative to, to make sure that we can have, have full classes and get to thoughtful approach and all that. Amazing.
Anything that you need to say moving forward for today? Wanting, questions you have, wanting information you need moving forward, good supply. Do you need some sort of a journey? A journey?